Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item we have is public comment period. We'll have a, people have one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes per group.
Can't hear anything.
Oh, hello? Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. We start public comment period of one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes per group. But if we have anybody that's online or Zoom, I guess Mr. Travis Wolf will probably let us know and I guess select or allow whichever ones go first. I guess that's how we'll work it. Or, and I know we have one write-in, Ms. Lawrence, that was all.
Yes, um, the Board of Supervisors have been given a copy of Mr. Bob Earhart from the 5th District. He has sent in via email his public comment and it will be in the minutes for record.
That was the end. Before we get started, I just wanted to clear up, I know there's been a lot of discussion, especially amongst staff about exactly what we're voting on and deciding tonight. I wanted to make clear that, you know, there have been suggested changes to the sick leave and annual leave program, but those are not part of the budget, languages, not part of the budget resolutions or the ordinances that would be adopted therefore. We're going to continue to have those discussions over the next couple of months, but that's not what we're taking action on tonight. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Travis.
If you would like to make a comment, please use the chat at the bottom of your screen to do so. Let me know that you would like to speak tonight and I can unmute you.
Travis, if they're just by telephone, they won't have that chat, am I correct?
Correct. So I was going to give them my cellphone number to text me in case they were want to call to let me know. I will put it out on the chat right now. And for those of you that are not on chat, you can text me at 804-921-6475.
Travis, my wife is on, she said if you hit star six, it will unmute those on a phone.
Okay, thank you.
Have any calls yet?
Stephen, I would give it a little bit. I see we're adding a few as we go along here.
Right.
For those of you that are on a phone call, if you were unable to hear Mr. Moran, if you on your phone, press pound six. Is that correct, sir?
Actually, star six.
I'm sorry, star six, it will unmute your phone. I currently have nothing in the chat.
Okay, thank you. How long you think we should wait?
I think you've been very generous myself. But the other thing I'd just like to mention, I did get several emails myself and I'm sure y'all did too, from employees and county residents dealing with the leave. But like Travis said, he answered that, that may have reduced the amount of public comment, I don't know.
Right. And I guess maybe we should make a note that personnel policies, I guess, should be directed to human resources also. Or I think we were told that at our last meeting, but of course, they always can reach out to us. And like I said, that we will look forward and work in the future. So we'll try to get all that straightened out before it actually goes into effect. I guess I'll just go ahead and close public comment period and table, I guess, and move on to the next item. We have a consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll second it.
And we have a motion made and properly just seconded, or was there any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence, could you go all?
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Consent agenda passes. Next item we have is number eight, presentations, but it looks as if we don't have any this evening. So we'll move on to item nine, old business. And we have the first one, resolution 20-08, parentheses, R1, appropriating restricted general funds to the County of King William for reimbursement of fiscal year 2020 school expenses. Ms. Natasha Journalian, Director of Financial Services.
Good evening to everyone, everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Resolution 20-11 R1 is presented tonight for the Board's approval to utilize money from the restricted funds within the general fund balance. This restricted fund balance is calculated as part of the split levy reconciliation from year-end 2019. King William County Finance is requesting 108,940 and 49 cents to be appropriated for reimbursement of annual operating costs associated with the King William County Public Schools. Seventy thousand of that is included in the amount requested for estimated amount of King William County Public Schools portion of the new financial software cost. Staff recommends adoption of resolution 20-11 R1.
Any discussion or questions from Ms. Journalian?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve of resolution 20-11 R1.
A second. Okay, we have a motion made and properly seconded. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Resolution carries. Next item we have on the agenda is item 10, new business. Number A, consideration of resolution 20-22, adoption of King William County operating budget for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Again, Ms. Natasha Journalian, Director of Financial Services.
Resolution 20-22 is presented to you tonight for approval of the fiscal year 2021 budget. The proposed budget includes the modifications requested by the Board at the work session on April 17. The final general fund budget request is 25,674,511. The changes included addition of one full-time deputy for the Sheriff's Office and one full-time fire medic for fire and EMS. Reducing the Motorola radio maintenance costs due to the Motorola Tower project. Eliminate, eliminating the assistant manager position at the regional animal shelter, reducing King William County's funding portion for RAS. Reducing fund for Pumunki Regional Library to only cover the health coverage increase that was requested from the library. Removal of all travel training expenses from internal departments except for the sheriff and fire and EMS. Adjusted auto and general liability to include 15% discount received for insurance renewal. We reduce the legal services by $20,000. Reduce load expenses and we requested zero for contingency funding. Staff recommends adoption of resolution 2022.
Any questions from Ms. Journalian?
I'd just like to say I appreciate all the hard work by everybody and us getting together and seeing what we could do and kudos to everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve 20-22.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion made and properly seconded. Is any more discussion on the matter?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it's probably just important that we, you know, just point out where we were when we started this process. And, you know, point out the changes that we've had to make to make a budget that we think can survive this crisis. You know, we, we had initially funded for three additional deputies, three additional fire medics. You know, we've been able to provide some additional funding for schools and provide for some long-needed capital for both the county and the school system. But obviously in light of, you know, the disaster that has been wrought upon us and not knowing what, you know, the economy is going to be like in the next several months. The administrator and the finance staff and the department heads, I think, have done an excellent job finding ways that we can, you know, live, live with it here. And I think we all would agree, hope that things get better and that we can return to that budget that I think funded a lot of long-held needs. But obviously, we've got to live with the reality and the uncertainty that we have right now. So echoing my other board colleagues, kudos to our staff. I think they've, they've done a great job to my colleagues on the board as well. You know, we got together last Friday and we went through this budget again, found some more reductions in there just to try to create as much room as we can in case things get worse before they get better. But I think we all share the hope that they will get better. You know, I don't think any of us like that we've had to eliminate the things that were in the budget to start with. Because again, they're, they're long-held needs, but we'll see, we'll see where we get from here. But thank
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to say the same thing along the lines Travis is talking about and that we don't lose sight of those things that we wanted to do, even if it's in this budget. If, if things clear up, and I'm optimistic, but not if we stay in this for a month, it's not going to happen.
Right, thank you. And I'd also like to read the statement that was with the staff letter that went out from Ms. Tassinari. It's like she stated, if the economy rebounds faster than expected, the Board of Supervisors have stated that we will consider amending the fiscal year 2021 budget, maybe around mid-year to reinstate areas that have been reduced where appropriate. Or as you both have said, if things go for the worst, we may have to go the opposite direction and may have to dig deeper and do more cuts. So yes, thank you everyone for all the hard diligent work y'all have done for the county and staff and everything else. So thank you so much. And any other discussion on that? Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is 10B, ordinance 03-20, to adopt the county tax rates for calendar year 2020. Again, Ms. Natasha Journalian, Director of Financial Services.
Ordinance 03-20 is presented for your consideration to approve tax levies for calendar year 2020. The tax rates presented are the equivalent to the 2019 calendar year tax levies, with exception of the addition of alternative personal property for one motor vehicle for qualifying disabled veterans under King William County Code 70-141.1. Staff recommends adoption of ordinance 03-20.
Thank you, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, recommend
I move approval. Olivia, have everyone put that down, one of us move.
Put one for first and one for second, sound like
Put that for the motion, put me as a second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion properly seconded, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item we have on the agenda, 10C, resolution 20-23, the adoption, adopting fiscal year 2020 to 2021, the employee health plan. Ms. Journalian, Director of Financial Services.
Resolution 20-23 is presented for your approval of fiscal year 2021 health plan with the local choice. The rates for fiscal year 2021 reflect a 4.8% increase. The county will continue to offer the key advantage 250 and 500 plans. Both employee and employer would proportionally share the increase based on percentages approved in fiscal year 2019. Staff recommends adoption of resolution 20-23.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve resolution 20-23.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made and properly just seconded, any more discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Next item we have on the agenda is item 10D, I mean, yeah, 10D, consideration of resolution 20-24, approving a pay and classification and salary adjustment plan for fiscal year 2021. Ms. Journalian, Director of Financial Services.
Resolution 20-24 is presented for approval of fiscal year 2021 class and compensation plan. Changes to be noted within the fiscal year 2021 plan were approved by the Board of Supervisors with resolution 20-10 on February 24, 2020. The updates to the plan were based on recommendations from a comprehensive review of components that affect the county's compensation program, such as review of current compensation structure, reassess the county's compensation philosophy, determine the regional market competitiveness of county salaries, strive to ensure the integrity of the ongoing administration of the compensation system. Staff recommends approval of resolution 20-24.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and properly seconded, any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 10E, consideration of resolution 20-25, adopting King William County Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. Ms. Journalian, Financial Services again.
Resolution 20-25 is requesting approval from the Board for the fiscal year 2021 Capital Improvement Plan. The CIP for fiscal year 2021 totals 4.9 million. 210,000 would come from the general fund to support funding to the CIP for emergency services, building fund for purchase of a fire engine and replacement of rugged laptops for the sheriff's office. The proper cash would support renovation to the 360 property with 30,000, along with state assistance in the amount of 100,000 to reimburse the county for renovations to the 360 property to move to social service offices. 45,000 from the capital CIP fund balance would support county administrator, I'm sorry, county administration servers, softwares and computers, computer equipment, as well as general repairs to the McAllister Building and the courthouse. And 4.5 million from debt finance will support the CIP for the Motorola Tower project. Staff recommends approval of resolution 20-25.
Thank you. Any discussion or question?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and multiple seconds. Any more discussion or questions on the matter? Okay, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item we have on the agenda is 10F, consideration of resolution 20-26, appropriating county operating budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Ms. Natasha Journalian, Director of Financial Services again.
Our resolution presented tonight is resolution 20-26, requesting appropriation of funding for fiscal year 2021 budget. Staff recommends approval of resolution 20-26.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve 20-26.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and properly seconded, is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, we've gotten Mr. McRoberts all dressed up and on this call here. I would just, you know, the reason that we have him here, because we had a question about the appropriateness of taking these actions and this method in light of, you know, the opinion from the Attorney General during the declaration of emergency. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give Mr. McRoberts just a minute to go ahead and explain, you know, the opinion that he's given us on, on these actions.
Yes, I think that would be absolutely perfect, thank you. And Mr. McRoberts?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. During the COVID crisis, of course, we, we came into the situation with a declaration of emergency by your emergency coordinator, the county administrator, that was followed up with confirmation of that declaration of emergency by the Board of Supervisors. At the same time, there was a concern about in-person meetings during the, you know, the height of the crisis. And so the need was to find a way to meet and conduct the, the business of the county in, in, during that crisis. And so we investigated various ways. There certainly is the ability to meet electronically under the Freedom of Information Act. But as many people, including many of the open government advocates that normally lobby the General Assembly have said, the Freedom of Information Act simply wasn't written for this kind of an emergency. It was written for hurricanes or an enemy attack or things like that. It simply wasn't written for this. And so the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act that allow electronic-only meetings without a quorum present were very limited. And they only allowed addressing the emergency, that was the scope of the limit. However, that is not the end of the authority that the Board has to address the emergency. 15.2-1413 allows the adoption of an ordinance to address methods and adopt methods to continue government and to have continuity in government. My interpretation of that is that the government ought to continue doing the things that it needs to do. And that includes adopting the budget as you have done tonight. Under 15.2-1413, this Board did adopt a continuity of government ordinance. And in that, the Board by that ordinance authorized the ability to come together and not only address items that are addressing the emergency, but also items that are necessary or appropriate to continue government and have continuity of government as authorized under the statute. So that's the authority under which the Board has, has met this evening. But that's not the end of the authority that the Board has, because the General Assembly met about a week ago and adopted yet more language that the governor had proposed that also allows electronic meetings for necessary and essential matters, as well as matters that are within sort of the, the duties and responsibilities of the Board of Supervisors. So those sort of three sources of authority give you various abilities to meet electronically and adopt matters and to address the items that are within your area of responsibility to make sure that you can continue government and that you can address the needs of your citizens. So that's, that's been my opinion, that is my opinion. And, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. McRoberts, are there any questions for him at the present?
Andrew, this is Stuart. Just specifically throw out there that this does include all items, discussion of the budget and approval of the budget.
Oh, absolutely. You know, there's certainly no question that the budget is an essential matter for the continuity of government. It's certainly an essential matter and so certainly under really either the continuity government language or the governor's budget language, certainly I would also add that, that the Attorney General's opinion that was issued also specifically recognizes the idea of adoption of continuity government ordinance to, to address meeting in the way that the Board is meeting now.
Thank you. I do have a question since I've got you on here and we had to pull you in anyway. What about other boards and commissions? The planning commission seems to be a little vague. And since it's not per se dealing with budget, but it is dealing with the ordinances and our comp plan and those kind of things, is that still covered under the electronic meeting also? Because some of our members are concerned that that's not legal for our planning commission. I just wanted to maybe get that out there. Hopefully, I see our planning director is listening. Hopefully, the other people that had the questions are too.
Sure, sure. Yeah, in my opinion, it is covered. We certainly addressed all public bodies of the county in the ordinance, because it's a continuity of government ordinance. It's not just a continuity of the work of the Board of Supervisors ordinance. It's intended to It's intended to address the broader needs of the government to work, and that includes your planning commission. Now, I have, you know, I would recommend that they, just like I would recommend to you, not take up any and all things during this format, but if there are things that come along that need to be addressed, then the ordinance absolutely gives them the ability to address them.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you. That explains a whole lot. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess now we'll move to item 11, administrative matters from our county administrator, Ms. Bobby Tassanary.
Mr. Chairman, what is in your board information packet is just your monthly updates that you normally see, and includes the mid-year expenditure and revenue collections, reports from the regional animal shelter, building inspections, VIPSa. So just the standard reports are available.
Any questions for the administrator?
Bobby, if I may, this is Stuart. It looks like from what I'm looking at, we're actually running a little bit ahead of projections. Is that correct?
Ahead of projections on expenditures or on your revenues?
Oh, revenue.
Yes, we are doing very well still this year. One of the things to keep in mind is that a large portion of our budget, and I say large, probably about 5 million, is the state sales tax and the 1% sales tax, and those are always two months behind. So as we go into the next fiscal year, we will still be collecting revenue in those areas for this current fiscal year. So those will be the ones that tell us the most about the impact of this pandemic on our economy.
Yes, yes, I understand. Thank you.
Bobby, are those collected monthly or quarterly?
They're collected, I believe, monthly, but the Department of Treasury collects them. I believe it's the Department of Treasury taxation, and then they distribute them after the fact. But that's the 1% sales taxes what we send to the town of West Point, and we also provide to, I'm sorry, that's wrong, the state sales tax is what we distribute between the King William Public Schools and the town of West Point. The 1% sales tax is what we utilize to support the King William County schools predominantly.
Ms. Tassanary, off the beaten path question, the animal shelter, if things settle down up there with recues? We got no, that hump?
With the seizures?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as I know, the last seizure that we received was those five hounds, and the animal shelter was collecting donations to try to get them all of the heartworm treatment so that they could be adopted. We haven't, I believe, had any additional seizures that I've been made aware of since that time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Wow, okay, well, seeing no one, it looks like we'll move into Board of Supervisors comments. This went faster than I thought, and then I think last time we started with District 1, so this time we'll start with District 5. Mr. Moran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was very impressed, as some have already said, with the work, the difficult work to put this budget together and take a lot of input from all of us, and then as well as the effects of the pandemic to prepare and lower the expectation, unfortunately. I think we've done this without decreasing the critical services that counties provide, the sheriff's department, fire EMS, and other critical public service. I think we can continue to meet the expectation of the general public and hope we can keep it up with what we have to face and head in the next couple of months.
Mr. Garber?
Yeah, to, I'm pretty much in agreement with Ed and everything that he said, and as I said earlier, I think everybody did a great job coming together and realizing the historical time that we're in. And, you know, it's hopefully things smooth out, you know. And I would also like to thank everybody out there. I can't see who's there, but I understand it's probably about 20 people, that's probably including us, but.
Actually, 38.
38, 38, well, that's a good thing, yeah. And I think that everybody in King William County needs to, you know, deserves a pat on the back for keeping their distance, doing the right thing. You know, it's tough for everybody to stay at home, and hopefully we'll all get through this together.
Mr. Miskowski?
You know, this is my ninth budget that I've adopted, and I cannot recall one before this where we had a five-o vote. So I think that's demonstrative of the hard work of staff. I think it's demonstrative of the collaborative effort that the five of us on the board have put together in talking to staff to get questions answered and talking to each other to try to work through issues as we've gone through this. Every single member of this board has contributed something to this budget, which is impressive because that's not always been the case. You know, everybody has had meaningful questions, really good ideas and input, and, you know, it's really, it's unfortunate that we had to kind of on a dime pivot and go from a really hopeful budget to, you know, thinking pessimistically and kind of in worst-case scenarios, because I feel like we've been doing that for so long, just digging out of the recession that I don't think local and state governments ever really fully recovered from in the first place to now kind of being back in that, in that position. And so, again, we all hope that things get better, but we've got a budget that I think prepares us for the worst, and now we can start being hopeful, we can start looking again for opportunities, we can start looking for ways to help where we can in this recovery. And I think that's, that's maybe some of the next steps for us is figuring out what roles we can play as a local governing body and helping people get back on their feet, get back in business. But just to everybody here, and it's impressive, I think, that we have 38 people on this, this meeting in this call. That's probably as many as we've had at most budget work sessions with the exception of some of the more controversial ones maybe in the past. You know, let's all continue to find ways to help each other, help our neighbors, help the most vulnerable as we get through this, and I think if we all stick this out together, we'll be in a strong position to move forward. So thanks again, everybody be safe, and again, try to be a helper out there.
Thank you. Mr. Hodges?
Right, I'd just like to thank everyone that is out there, even though I only see a number, I could scan across probably and see some of the names, but appreciate them being there, their interest, the county employees' interest in their benefits, and that's how we react is when we get responses from them. And we will try to do the best we can with this situation, dealing with the COVID. Folks, just don't back off of it thinking it's all gone and it hadn't hit us so bad around here. Stay safe and keep that distance, and I think we're going to be doing that for a while. Hopefully, the budget will turn around and we'll be able to do the things that we really wanted to. It's like I told Bobby not long ago, 45 days ago, I thought we were in good shape, and how quickly it can turn. But like I said, I appreciate all the board members. Can't repeat anymore of what Travis said, you know, we've never really, at least I haven't had a board that worked together like this board has, and I do appreciate it. And y'all be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to reiterate everybody the same thing. Travis is so eloquent with everything he says. Like you said, I guess he and I, the ones that have just been on the board the longest, and I guess when he talked to me earlier today, I didn't realize that this was the first one that we actually have, five to one. He didn't vote for one, I didn't vote for one, Otto didn't vote for many, so I was shocked myself, and it shows that we can all work together. And as, we do all have differences, like Stuart told me on the phone, that's a good thing. We all always have differences, but we're able to work it out, work together. And like we said today, there were lots and lots of emails. I can't do a lot of answering because I have a job and I can't take time from that, but I noticed that we went around, other people took the initiative, answered some of the questions. Sorry, I can't get back to everybody during my working hours, but we all got the answers. Everybody got what they needed. We are able to have the meeting, and like I said, I think it was a great success. And like I said, 38 people in here, I think that's extraordinary. I think it might even be more than we have actually in the boardroom, because, I mean, with the five of us, that's like way more people in there than I think we've ever had. So I thank the public, I thank our employees, I thank my fellow board members. And like I said, we will work with all the emails we got and work with this human resource plan, hopefully come up with the, maybe a better plan that works for all. Like I said, we've got everybody's input, we've got the citizens' input, we've got the employees' inputs, so hopefully we can work good for that. And like Travis said, we don't have a lot of cases in our county. I think we did just yesterday, I think they got the notice that it was up to seven, so that's, I mean, nothing's good to have it, but that's a fairly good number for us and no deaths, so everybody keep, keep doing what we're doing, keep safe. Sorry, we have to, can't see everybody in person, we're all one big family in the county. Like Mr. Hodges always said, it's our big, beautiful county of King William. We need to all stick together. Thank you so much for coming. Next item, it seems we have a closed meeting, but I don't think we have anything for the closed meeting. I see nobody has anything for that, so we'll move on to appointments, and I don't think we have any appointments either, so I guess.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr.?
Motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and properly seconded to adjourn. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence, could you call it off?
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
I was less than about 40, 40 minutes.
I know, I thought that too, with a budget for less than an hour, that is extraordinary.
Could I ask y'all guys something?
Sure, can't be anything business, but.
No, 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 this is a, y'all said that Andrew was dressed up, is he in suit and tie, or was he wearing that cowboy hat again?
He's got a suit and tie on.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I was going to be on video, guys, I had to dress up a little bit.
Well, what about y'all guys? Are y'all in a suit and tie, or y'all?
I assume, I assume you were in a suit and tie, you're not?
Hey Travis, he can't see us, so tell me whatever you want.
I'm in a suit and tie.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
I have a tight suit and tie.
All right, folks. Anyway, it was good talking to y'all, and I will see you all the next time.
All right.
All right.
Bye. Bye.
Everybody be safe.
Right, and I guess our next meeting is our work session, so that would be our next meeting, so.
Yeah.
Bye.